Yes, okay, we're good. Good evening, I call the July meeting with focus for educational board. Our price, our hostess evening is Dr. Jeffrey Menzer, who will be in the White's. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands by my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First order of business we have is the motion for corrections to the board agenda. Any additions or corrections to whatever's in board? There is one at sex, S, 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 at students, students on the agenda of the state. Are you on it? Any other additions or corrections? Ah, do I hear a motion to approve agenda as correct? Will you accept? Moved by Mr. McGee, seconded by Mr. Kennedy, approve the agenda as presented. Questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Vote as nay. Agenda was approved. Next order of business we have is organization of board of education, this point of turnover, the chair to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Laws, at this time, I will make nominations for the board president position.
I'd like to nominate Ted Lawson for president.
Nomination, do I hear a second? Second, Mr. McGee. Okay, do a roll call vote? Oh, sorry, any other nominations? So I'm going to make a motion to close the nominations. By Mr. McGee. Second, by Mr. Piquet. All in favor? All votes? Hearing none, close them? I pass the vote. Now we'll do a roll call vote. Yes. I pass the vote. Hearing that said, the vote is Ted Lawson, I vote Ted Lawson to be the president of the school board for 2021 school year.
You can get out of that?
Is that your Robert Ture in order?
I'm gonna have to read up on the Robert Ture.
Thank you, Dr. Menzer. Next office, the next office that we will accept nominations for will be the nominations of the election of vice president. Do I hear an update issue for the president?
Nomination for the president.
Your second? The other nominations? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to nominate nomination for vice president? Will you accept? All in favor, signify by saying aye. It's carried with sole individual right of the vice president, I don't care about that. Next order of business we have is the designation of secretary. Secretary of secretary is going to be the superintendent, which will be Dr. Jeffrey Menzer. Do I hear a motion to appoint Dr. Menzer as the executive secretary?
I'm going to appoint Dr. Menzer as executive.
Will you accept? Move second to designate Dr. Menzer as the executive secretary. Question? All in favor, signify by saying aye or nay?
Aye.
Vote as nay?
Just give you an update from the audience, it might be very sensitive if you pick up any junk in the papers. It does pick up air. That's what we can. Getting live feed from the audience.
Next order we have would be for nominations of the elected question of representative of the SBA Board of Directors. What we do with this, we have two spots, we have the SBA Board of Directors, who look for a representative and an alternate representative. Same with the SBA Legislative Committee, for a primary representative and alternate representative. Okay? Do I hear nominations, to show interest in being the representative of the SBA Board of Directors?
Nomination for Liam McGee. Who knows how interested in that? Two people left there.
Minister, say it, say it.
Any other nominations? Do I hear a nomination? For the representative of the SBA Board of Directors, be closed.
I'm not even voting for the nomination of the SBA.
Second, move second to close the nominations for the representative of the SBA Board of Directors. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Vote as nay? We can be the only nominee to be the primary representative of the SBA. Do I hear a nomination for the election of the alternate representative of the SBA Board of Directors? Kevin?
I'd like to nominate Ron.
Second. Hear any of those nominations? Here, others of nominations for alternate representative, be closed.
There was already nominated.
Do I hear a second? Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Vote as. It's carried with the alternate representative of the SBA Board of Directors. Open up the nominations for the election of the SBA Legislative Committee Representative. Kennedy?
I'd like to nominate Bobby Brown.
Other nominations? Right, do I hear a motion for nominations to be voted for the Legislative Committee Representative? Will you accept?
Second.
Move second to vote the nomination for the SBA Legislative Committee Representative. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Vote as nay? Carlson? Good job, Chris Menzer.
Thank you.
Enjoy it, Dave.
I do.
Open up the nominations for the election of the SBA Legislative Committee Alterment. Do I hear a nomination? I nominate.
I nominate first.
Chris, we go to a meeting. That's the primary. Any other nominations? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to oppose the nomination for the Legislative Committee Alter? So, will you accept? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Vote as. It's carried, congratulations, Chris. Okay, the last letter we have, organization of board, it is the adoption of proper rules of order as a guideline. Do I hear a motion?
I wanted to adopt proper rules of order as a guideline.
Will you accept? Move second to adopt proper rules of order as a guideline for the board. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Vote as nay? Or it's just carried? Okay, thank you all again, for another successful year, we didn't open this virus and get back. Okay, next order of business we have is the double school board association.
Fourteen thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson. I was just bringing you up on my screen, making that, yes, fourteen thousand, four hundred and forty-three?
Forty-six.
Forty-six.
Do I hear a motion? Motion to approve the bill on paper of the SBA movement. Second, move second to approve the double school board association news to be paid. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Vote as nay? Motion is carried. Next order of business we have is the consent agenda. Mr. McGee stepping out, we still have four also moving to continue.
So, just, as a point of reference from the, from Phil, who's manning monitoring meeting, we'd like us to slow down a little bit in our speaking, can speak louder and clearer to the listeners who are talking. Hey, you're not enough, apparently, so you're good. And maybe if we, if we can scoot, just a tad, maybe Lucy scoot a little closer to the white, away from the air conditioner, Ron, you as well, scoot a little closer to the white, right there, slide your table forward a little bit, and then, hopefully, it's just not speaking louder or.
Yo, fool.
You're on camera, hold on.
Oh, on camera.
Please remember, there's.
All right, we're good. Now we'll go ahead, so try it now. Consent agenda, consent agenda, moves the past board meeting minutes. Education items such as good cause reports, first termination, that's board report. And administer, other administrative items. EPR approval, some HR. Some business items we have on there specifically, speech language therapy services, contracts for language liaisons, food service for food distributor, food produce suppliers, bar food services for smallwares, food service on a corner pair for dairy kitchen, dairy kitchens, for the, for the kitchen equipment of any day in which we prepare. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda items? I motion. Will you accept?
Second.
Moved by Chris Bencho, approved, and seconded by Mr. Carlson. Great questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Vote as nay? Motion is carried five zero. Next order of business we have is policy review and approvals.
So there are three items in this agenda, I, Mr. Laws. The first one is a policy manual update, you'll see in your board docs, there's a hyperlink to the board manual, submitting it to the board for first review. Last month, immediately following our last school board meeting, Mr. Law requested that I make sure that our board manual, policy manual is up to date. I went through and found that there were some potential typos slash missing dates in some of the documents, the bulk of the changes that were made were just to kind of make sure we have one more policy manual that's accurate, up to date, and been reviewed. And presenting it now for the full, the full manual, the board for review for first read, and I'll take questions next month, so there are no, for the record, Mr. McGee is mature. There were, any of the changes that were made were like adding an end for to a designated, bringing some of the language up to code, that the entire manual was reviewed by the school's district legal counsel and made recommendations as well, just to bring it current to date without no massive changes to policy or procedure. More aligned with the current climate as well as with the regulation. So I present it now as a first read and ask you to approve it to have our second read in August.
Any questions, Dr. Menzer? Okay, there's my want to policy review for Title IX.
As the board is well aware, Miss Sleetwood presented a Title IX, policy ten, one ten, first read is Jim, I do believe she is a panelist. If there are any questions, I'm sure she would be able to go ahead and respond, otherwise, we would request a motion to approve the board policy. Again, I believe last time this discussion was that these were just bringing us up to current standards of Title IX regulations federally, this was more of a hand down from the federal government to the state and to our legal counsel who presented us with a proposal for how we should modify our policy, and I believe it's in, I think, correctly.
Yes, you're correct, Dr. Menzer.
I believe that it's more to protect, it has a protection clause for those who are reporting it, I believe, there's something about it that's a little different.
There's, there's many changes, really, it's for the investigation piece of how it is, it's, it's so that there are several layers involved now when there's a complaint, it's not one person who takes the complaint investigates, it, it has several layers and it ensures that there's proper training. As a matter of fact, our district leadership council will be trained tomorrow on the procedures that we need to follow in regards to the federal government's piece of it.
Is there anything that sticks out, Betsy, that you should discuss a little bit further, or is it just layer?
I, I think probably I can come back next meeting and give you some of the heads up, I think now it's probably going to involve, whereas before, you know, I typically took the complaints, investigated and did the response, it's now going to involve at least three people, three different people, just to ensure that there's no bias in the investigation. That was one of the biggest things that came out that I realized, and just the training that we have to make sure that we not only do for ourselves, we post on our website as well, but again, after our training tomorrow, I can come back and share some of the highlights of this change, if that's okay.
And for the grievance process, we can follow. There's also an appeal process as part of this.
I, I'm having a little bit of trouble hearing that last question.
Was there, is, there's a grievance process as part of, as part of this, is there an appeal process as part of the?
People have always had those options now, yes, they do have that, but it goes to separate people now, so as the investigator, I wouldn't hear an, an grievance or an appeal, there's different access points into that. Dr. Menzer, as the superintendent, could be the final person who would hear, it would stay within our leadership group, but it definitely spells out that it's different people to ensure that there are protections to the individual who's accused and the individual who's making the accusation, there's protections on both sides.
Is there any questions for Miss Sleetwood? Mr. Carlson in there? Mr. McGee? Great too? No. Mr. Kennedy? Hand? Can I hear a motion?
I move to approve Title IX policy number one ten as presented by the administration.
Will you accept? Moved by Mr. Carlson, approved by Mr. Kennedy, to approve Title IX policy one ten as presented. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Vote as nay? Motion is carried.
So there's a third policy approval on the table, the district presented a code of conduct for your first read in June, Nikki Jones' record schools presented that code of conduct and highlighted toward the changes that really strongly align to the restorative practices and social restorative justice model of student discipline as well as working with students who commit violations of the code of conduct. They, they now came forward through a collaborative effort between administration and school based staff of regular recommendations for, and I would ask that the board approve the code of conduct as presented. Miss Jones, she? Bill, I, I'm not sure if Miss Jones is there, I don't see her up on as a panelist, you would have to check and grab and see if she's there. I can take any questions, I guess.
Is there any questions for Dr. Menzer? Really, Ron?
On page forty-two, it talks about, it says parent guardian surrogate, that's the only place that it's mentioned, plugged into the document.
And then it's in on the definition page?
Um, no, no, it's forty-two, it's whatever, whatever, um, page you look up with, if it's going to have issue with everything, and it says parent guardian surrogate, but the rest of them says it's parent guardian, is it uniform, or was that not?
Uh, I would have to ask the legal counsel about that, I believe surrogate is, is a legal term, someone would be applying surrogate at the court, so I don't know if that's left out for a reason, other than that they are.
It's, it's in in one section, not the other.
If that is something that, you know, I don't know how that, it doesn't impact the substance of the, the document, but I will bring that back for a question to legal counsel and find out if there's a way to amend, if it needs to be amended following. I don't, you know, Mrs. Jones is now, I think, joined us.
I am now a panelist.
Yeah, there she is, a panelist now, she was in the audience as a panelist, I don't believe that came up in the discussion with the school climate committee, did it make you the question?
It did not, no.
That would be a question that I would have to take back to legal counsel. Well, I mean, we, maybe that's a further definition that's not there. Well, it's, it's defined, it's just the surrogate is not used throughout the document, it says parent guardian, I don't think it says parent guardian slash surrogate, but it is defined as a, as a body. Doesn't necessarily impact the document, it's been this way for a long time, I don't think it's ever, that's, that's never been changed.
We're supposed to, are there any other questions? Board's pleasure to proceed on with the move to approve, or to table it, to get the answer to the question.
I move to approve the file of student code of conduct revision.
Second. Moved second, moved by Mr. Cross, the second by Mr. McGee, to approve the studio student code, code of conduct revisions. Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Vote as nay? Motion is carried. Next order of business we have is the collaborative agreements, Dr. Menzer?
Yes, as, as we did last month, we presented several of the bargaining groups who cabled their negotiations due to the pandemic crisis, and while we didn't have to make any binding agreements, we felt that it was a good thing to agree to hold those negotiations and maintain our, our spot with the bargaining group. Ally, is there a technical term that I should be using when it comes to just carrying it forward, please join in and correct me if I need to be corrected?
You're fine for now.
Thank you very much.
So, so basically, so basically, we're just approving, I'm, I'm understanding that we're going to hold where we are.
Yep.
And then once we shake out what's happening with the virus, then we'll proceed with our negotiation.
That's correct.
So this is an approval?
Now, this is an approval of the existing one to maintain, stay in place during the COVID crisis, just keep what we have right now.
Sorry?
For the other, we know?
Yes. Number one.
Yeah, we approved three of them last month.
Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Will you accept? Moved by Mr. Handy, approved by, seconded by Mr. McGee, to approve the motion of consideration and action upon the peremptory ending of understanding to the collaborative agreement with transportation group. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Vote as nay? Motion is carried. Next order of business we have is the collaborative agreement for the AF, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSCME, AFL-CIO located local two one eight of Council eighty-one, Dr. Menzer?
I am going to turn that one back over to Miss Falcon, and hopefully she will join us and kind of give an update of where we are with this collaborative agreement.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Menzer, good evening, board members, if you remember from the, I believe it was the June meeting, we had a version of this contract in front of you, it had a three-year salary increase that was negotiated prior to the pandemic and the, the downturn in the economy. That, that contract was, was not approved by the board to move forward for ratification, we subsequently went back to the negotiating table with the AFSCME group, and they expressed a desire, because the rest of the language in the contract, there were some other substantive changes that we both agreed to and were anxious to move forward on, we decided to move forward with, seeing if we could come up with a, another version of the contract to move forward, rather than waiting an entire year. So what we have in front of you today is the same language changes, the, the non-financial language changes that were agreed to during the bargaining sessions that occurred in the spring. The salary portion of the contract has changed from, well, the length of the contract itself has gone from a three-year contract to a two-year contract. The salary increase, we're offering or recommending a one point five percent increase in the local scale for, for the current year that we're in, for FY twenty-one, and then for FY twenty-two, there's actually language that would require a salary re opener because of the economic uncertainty surrounding the budget and our revenue situation. The union agreed that it was the most responsible thing to do to, you know, come back to the table in the spring, once there was more information on the financial picture for the district and negotiate at that point in time, which we also anticipate will be, you know, in negotiations with all of our other bargaining groups as well, so that's a, that's a summary, I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Any questions, Miss Falcon? Carlson in there? Carlson, any questions? No? Chris?
I commend them for.
Yeah, go ahead, hold on.
No questions here, will you hear a motion?
I motion.
Excuse me? I motion. Okay, will you hear a second?
Second.
So move, move by Mr. Bencho, and seconded by Mr. McGee, to hear, to hear the motion of consideration and action upon the M U of a collaborative agreement with, with the AFSCME group. Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Vote as nay? Motion is carried six zero. Personnel matters, Dr. Menzer?
As we discussed in executive session, I would ask the board to approval to make the administrative appointment.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the administrative appointment as discussed in executive session.
Will you hear a second? Moved by Mr. McGee, seconded by Mr. Carlson, to approve the administration, administrative equipment as discussed in executive session. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Vote as nay? Motion is carried six zero. Okay, it's termination of employee. Okay, determination of employee. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to confirm the termination of employee number twenty-one dash one oh one is recommended by the administration.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
This move by Mr. Crossen, seconded by Mr. McGee to approve the termination of employee twenty-one dash one oh one as recommended by the administration. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, nay? Motion is carried, six-zero. Superintendent Court?
So I have two, I have three items, because you did add, I believe, a third item to that, which was the student addition of student to the board. So I'm going to talk about return to school planning first, just to give you an update where we are currently. As you know, you receive this staff update every week that goes out to our district employees about where we are, so you're aware of the things that we're doing, the decisions that we've made. Last week was a big week. We did announce that William Penn is going to start the year remotely. We were, to be quite frank, we were treating it just as a matter of course, that that was just the best decision for our students and our staff and our community, and we were just kind of rolling with it to the next phase and getting ready for this week. It made some big splash. It got a lot of attention in the media, Delaware Online, Delaware Public, Channel Six. There's a few stories out there that wasn't our intent or design. We were, we believe, doing the right decision by the district. We will continue to make those same decisions and share them with the board every week when we share them with our staff. You know, we have several workgroups running. We have a district-level workgroup. It's a larger group with two subsets of operations and instruction, and they're meeting on a weekly basis and meeting on a daily basis in smaller groups and transportation, nutrition services, facilities, and technology. And then our instructional group is working on the development of stronger remote learning plan as well as preparing for what it's face-to-face going to look like. Then you kind of bleed into, all that stuff bleeds into, each building now has a building-based team planning for the return. So there are, Monday last week and Monday this week, we had school-based team webinar on Zoom with almost two hundred staff from secretaries, custodians, teachers, administrators, looking at their buildings, assessing where they are and what they need to do to prepare and bring students back. We are using a lot of the feedback we received from the parent focus groups early in June as well as some of our survey data. As you do know, we did survey our staff, our community, giving them two options, pre-K through eight, remote learning, or face-to-face. As we're moving through this week, we are now live calling families who were not able to reach or who did not respond, and we've not been able to reach via social media, email, and the like. I would ask the school board, if you have any outreach in your districts and your areas, to please encourage any family that has not contacted their school about their choice, to please call their school. The school will walk through, filling out the survey response for them and logging into the system, because it does tell us face-to-face whether they're going to use transportation and where they are with access to internet and what kind of devices they have or might need. Those are the very, those are the heart of the questions that we're asking. I can say that McCullough and Eisenberg definitely need some help. Mr. Handy, if you could reach out to the families on the Root and I corridor, definitely reach out to Bill Johnston or date this or see what you can do to get the answers that they need in those schools. I think that they would appreciate any help. Those numbers will drive how Mr. Moffett wraps buses, how Ms. Angelucci prepares meals, and how the principals schedule and assign teachers in their building to instruct students in the twenty-one school year. It's very dynamic. It's a challenge. It's bigger than a jigsaw puzzle, but it is something that I feel that the district has taken a strong approach to keeping students and staff and family safety and wellbeing from the center on top of providing a high-quality educational experience. At this time, I'm glad to take any questions that you may be hearing from, you know, the community. I definitely want to make sure you're well armed to address any questions that come up. Hopefully, the communications you're getting, weekly help, you understand what's going on. If you're usually getting it live and direct and, you know, the media releases are usually, we didn't release anything to the media, so people are just talking about it and then jumping on the story.
Dr. Menzer, you may want to touch base on, I know that the plan right now is for K through eight to come in at the hybrid model. What's the plan nine through twelve?
So right now, William Penn's coming in remote to start the year. Once we get our feet on the ground, they were making some schedule changes in that model as well, where they're moving towards a semester-based program where they'll be taking four classes in the fall and four discrete classes in the spring. So no longer will they be taking eight classes at a time, which helps change the dynamic for teachers and students and families. And then, once we get the school year started and we see how buses run, how we're feeding all the other grade levels, then we will begin to look at the programming at William Penn to assess where we are with what students need to be in the building sooner than later. For example, students who are in our CTE classes that have hands-on instruction, maybe our instrumentals, some of our music, our coral, some of our groups that require them being physically present, we will begin to look and see how we can bring them in or how we can bring more students in. But it really is a very fluid challenge, and we're, you know, we're looking to buy ourselves some time using the remote learning model that's been built to start students off at school.
And you're planning on starting those classes, what dates? K through twelve, K through eight starts what day?
Right now, we, that's a further agenda item for discussion where I'd like to talk about, but we, our groups are meeting this week, and I'm hoping by Thursday of this week that those groups come back and say, look, this is where we're more comfortable beginning remotely and/or in person. And we're hoping to make that announcement probably by Thursday this week in the faculty update as well as in the.
Another part that adds into that from the high school and has some effect to the middle school, some of you know, I sit on the DIAA, which is the Athletic Association. We've had some lengthy discussions on, are we going to do fall sports, winter sports, and spring sports? There's a number of options out there that are being discussed right now, okay? No decision has been made yet. We're kind of waiting on what the governor comes out with. We have a meeting on the thirteenth of August, so hopefully we'll be able to move some more out there, but just some of the options that are out there is that we haven't delayed start with the fall seasons or all the seasons, compress them. I'll just say, for an example, for football, typically we have ten games that would start in September and go through to the first of November with playoffs and whatnot. Press to maybe six games is one of the options out there. There's some options out there that we say, do we go and do winter sports first and then come back and do fall sports in between winter and spring? Okay, that's some of the options that have been out there. Dad, which is the group of athletic directors for the state, had a very nice presentation at her last meeting that started some thought on there. Personally, I would rather see us promote, just promote to be late, start things late and start the fall that go into winter, because let's face it, worst time of the year is between February and March, kids are inside, right? And then just have a delay on the fall sports, a little bit start that in October, November, because it's still going to be somewhat decent Delaware weather. Another option that was thrown out on the table a while back was actually put the seasons, have spring and the fall, and fall and the spring. But that didn't gain much traction apparently. I think there was only one vote toward that from the chief's office or chief's group, and thank you, Jeff, for that. But yeah, that did, that was a low vote for that one. That didn't gain much traction, but it's not saying it may not, but by the time we have a meeting in the office to go there. There is a concern from all of the members of DIAA that we know, we, and we respect the fact that a lot of these young ladies and men need this as part of their education. Number one, number two, provides them the opportunities to be able to further their education with scholarships, those type of things. But we have to look at the big picture as well, let's make sure that we're doing everything in a healthy way and safely for everybody. So there's a lot to discuss, a lot to decide on that. And so once it's come into that, how you get kids into the games, the practices, all that kind of good stuff, so you can see, we as the board really are only seeing the tip of the iceberg on a lot of the stuff. So I appreciate what Jeff's group is going in, in all their meetings and whatnot, trying to pull this all together. It's not. It's not a small task to do that.
And one thing that we were, we were hoping that Dia had kind of shared, we'd share something before we announced on Thursday to kind of make sure we were aligned to where we were headed for the student athletes, and that didn't happen, and that's fine. If you look at any one of our documents that we put out, there's big bold language at the bottom that says, these are the plans current, and they are subject to change. This is an ever-evolving situation, and we recognize that, so we're not so foolhardy that we think we're picking the exact best way to solve something right now that we're going to bury our heads in the sand because it's what we want, not whether it's what's right for kids or families. So that's something that we put on all of our communications. And, you know, one thing I do want to clarify, if you read the news journal story today, while I did speak to that journalist, they called the way, they called the model we're doing colonial, a hybrid and pre-K. I, we, it's not a hybrid. You're either face-to-face or you're remote. There's no like flip-flopping back and forth at this point. It's for the first semester.
Two days, three days.
There's no two days, three days, there's no A-Day, B-Day's. We are clearly picking, you are picking one or the other. Hybrid is a, presents a significant challenge, the A-Day, B-Day, the A-week, B-week, this, that, and the other, the rotation of schedule, the way you have to. We have made a decision that it's remote or in-person, and while someone else may be calling it hybrid, we are not calling that hybrid. I just want to be very clear about that, so.
The people that are doing virtual education, so you're going to hold them to more accountability than you.
Correct. There will be more accountability for engagement, participation, and there'll be five days of instruction during this, during the fall as opposed to in the spring where there was, there was accountability, but it was not to the standard that many appreciate, whether it was teachers, parents, and even some students who wanted to be held accountable by grading and completion of assignments deadline. It's going to bring up the expectation for engagement for students as we're through either Zoom lessons, but also individualized virtual assignments that will be completed.
So the remote learners will be held at the same level of accountability as in-house?
That's the expectation, yes.
I would expect that once Dr. Menzer and all of his groups have all their meetings and settle on something, we'll see the program right.
Yes, Chris, the curriculum is going to change. I can't answer that directly, but I can tell you, you're having to make decisions about what has to be shifted, what has to be, what's something that we don't need to do at this point or that point to maximize the time that we have with the students. So there are a lot of decisions being made around the curriculum by these constructional teams at the district level, and they're providing that feedback, guidance, and that information to the school-based team.
Regarding William Penn, because of the nature of our programs and linking different pathways and all that, there's a lot of learning that almost requires hands-on group action.
Agreed one hundred percent, and that's why when the school-based team was at William Penn two and a half weeks ago, and they stood on the steps and were like, okay, let's do this, and I think they maybe got in through the doors and were like, oh my God. Like, we have got to, this is, we need to really push, we need to get more teachers. There needs to be more than fifteen people tackling this challenge, and that's one thing I can say. The staff and Colonial have really rallied up to support this work, our custodians, our bus crew, the nutrition workers, our teachers, our counselors, our administrators, our parent educators, our secretaries. Every classification employee is stepping into this realm of trying to make, help us make the best decision for students, and they're doing it, you know, if they want to be a part of this, they want to make it work for students because of what you just tried. There is a lot at stake, and, but in order to do it safely within the guidelines, the guidelines that we were given, it's going to take more time, more resources, and potentially more staff. So we just have to be honest, if there's going to be some shifting around, some things are going to occur, I'm not going to guess that you're a guess, but I know the answer to that. That's why we're working through it at the school-based level, and it's filtering up and the decisions are being made ultimately by the district senior leadership, but really the groups on the ground floor facing it are making the recommendations to us.
The other question is, I saw a survey, it was thirty-nine, sixty-one in-house remote whatever, and you said fifty percent responded. What did they respond to? In other words, you were asking.
There was a survey link that went out to all families.
On?
On either email, social media, phone call, alerting them to go to the school district website and complete the survey. The survey was in English, Spanish, French Creole, a couple other Arabic language, there were a couple other language options.
And you said all students have access in hotspots where the ones you don't? So from that, were you assuming that everybody has been informed as if they've been given a mail letter?
That'd be hard to assume. That's a, that's a big assumption that I know it. So that's why we are imploring the community now to get, we're making phone calls, we're going, you know, try and true, you know? If it was the old rotary with the cord, yeah, that's what we're doing. We're sitting down, plugging chugging, calling houses, and then we're filling out the survey for them. And then, quite frankly, one of the questions is, do you have access to reliable internet? Like, the answer is no. We have purchased hotspots, individual hotspots for our families and homes that need it, or we have a belief it's like a six-month at least Wi-Fi access for those folks. But we are, in the spring, we were near, almost everybody has a device that needed it, and we were down to like one percent didn't have internet access in the district. That's a pretty low number, and we're feeling really confident going into the fall that we're going to knock that number down.
Any further questions?
Yes. What type of timeline are you looking at giving teachers and parents to when school will start? And what type of school is going to be?
This Thursday, I would expect.
But when are you talking about starting?
Well, there's all kinds of options on the table. I know that there's, we go back earlier than most districts, so they could recommend we knock four days off and go still go before Labor Day. We could knock a couple of days, more days off and go a couple of days before Labor Day, or we could go after Labor Day. Or, I mean, I know the Brandywine School Board voted to go on September sixteenth, but they had also been talking about even going later. It really depends on what the team come back with, saying when they can start. I would anticipate that it's going to be anywhere from after Labor Day to just before Labor Day, but I want to give those teams an opportunity to finish their work before, I suppose, the.
And they're going to be the final decision?
They're going to be the recommenders and the final decision. One of the agendas, it's on the, on the.
Issue.
Is to ask the board to grant you the ability to react and respond to the school calendar as this crisis plays out and know that we're going to be making the best, trust we're making the best decision as soon as we can without having to post the board meeting for seven days and then have to wait for you to vote on it, only to have the crisis go worse the next day, knowing that whatever decision we make, the board will get a copy of the calendar the next month's board meeting for ratification and approval. So that's one of the, that's actually, you're getting one, you're, I'll move to the next item if that's okay with you.
Because there's so many moving pieces to this whole.
Yeah.
You know, the governor could change his mind more.
And I mean, how much time do you feel that teachers would need to take and get up and running for the school year?
I think we've been fortunate in Colonial, we've been working on this for a while, but I think you're going to need more time than we've already allotted, would be my gut. I think that we don't also know when the governor is going to announce the scenario that he picks. That also could change the dynamics a little bit. So if you pick scenario three, that's a whole set of can of worms that are different than what we're currently or planning for. If he goes scenario one, it's not much different because the criteria to be in-person doesn't change. Like, those are, those are not normal school rules. Like, going back live is not just going back live like opening up the doors and letting the water turn on. There's a lot of things to go into that. So we're good if he goes scenario one and two. He goes one for William Penn, might change the dynamics a little bit about what we're allowed to do within the rules, but it, it's a, to that point, it's super fluid. If I'm a betting person, I'm thinking we're going to be looking somewhere around closer to Labor Day than we are, but yeah, I want to be respectful of the committee's works that's going on.
Dr. Menzer, I do have two questions. One, so as far as the pupil count, I know they moved that date far back for us, and with our decisions, obviously, to do it slightly different with virtual and everything, have we heard anything where we're going to get any pushback getting our students counted in attendance if they're doing virtual?
So I'm going to defer to Emily. I know I see her up on the screen, she's going to be talking soon, or she's moving around on the screen there. She, we have been. She, we have been talking with the state around the unit count as a funding source, but then also as a future baseline data for the next year's funding. Emily, you wanna give a crack at that answer from what your conversation was with the CFOs today?
Emily, I know we talked about it last week. Has anything changed between last week and this week?
Yeah, actually, not in terms of firm decisions or, but we did have a meeting of the statewide CFOs today. And there is a small working group that is looking at what considerations are needed to figure out unit count this year. And, and what was discussed really was there's an estimated unit count process that happens in the spring. And we're, in normal times, we're guaranteed 98% of those units going into the next school year. There's been discussion of, of guaranteeing 100% of those estimated units as a way to fund us. But then sort of decoupling the units from the actual enrollment so that the challenges around remote and, and you know, the, the variations that we're all gonna be seeing in the fall can be decoupled from, from the actual funding of units this year. You know, there was, there was discussion that eliminating the unit count entirely and really not having any accounting of, of enrollment this year would put us at a disadvantage in trying to plan for next year. But we all feel that the funding itself needs to be protected in a way that we are held harmless or you know, there's some other recognition that the actual unit count, or the actual student count, I should say, is gonna be impacted in ways that we really can't, can't determine now and can't anticipate. So putting something in place where the state would agree to fund us on some measure of last year's, whether that's 100% of estimated, whether that's, you know, a hold harmless where we won't go below what we got last year. There's, there's definitely discussions on the table. But I think everyone is in agreement that, you know, requiring us to take attendance or, you know, expecting that remote, remote learning or remote unit count procedures are gonna be implemented across the board with fidelity, you know, that's very unlikely. So we're looking at what alternatives we have to, to make sure that, you know, we're still counting kids and planning for next year, but also getting funded at a fair level.
How about federal funding? Has there been any discussion on any federal funding that'll be available?
Other than the CARES Act money that was passed in the first relief bill that Congress passed, I think it was back in April. We do have funds available through that. And you know, we're still actually in the process of putting our application together for that because, you know, our plans are, are ever evolving. But that's the only pot of federal money that, that we're aware of. I know that there's recently been conversations at the federal level with Congress about putting, you know, various plans together for around two of relief. But none of that has, has come to fruition and I don't know how likely it would be to, to get to us anytime soon.
Yeah, that's, that, that might start to roll in. Okay. Any other questions?
Can I ask one more question? Sure. Does the same teacher who teaches the in-house class also teach the remote learning?
We are right now working through that, but the plan would be no. It would, you would be face to face or you would be remote. That's the plan or?
I actually have a follow-up to Robin's question. So obviously with our plans, we're gonna need more staff. To an extent, are we gonna be able to actually get, physically get that staff, not financially, but are they gonna, is there enough staff to go around? Because the other districts are gonna obviously have some of the same.
I would tell you right now, I don't know if we're gonna need more staff to go the way we've chosen to go teaching staff.
Even with some virtual and some in-house?
Because the numbers are the numbers. We're not adding kids. So there's a little bit of like magic, you know, the principal's holding his finger like, please have 50 so I can do 2.5s. You know, go 538, like, oh my God, like, right? You know, like, so there's a little bit of that, but we're gonna have these numbers. But I hope by the end of this week, so the principals can start looking at their staff and engaging their staffs. How we're gonna decide. The bigger rub, I will say, Chris, is who's gonna teach virtual and who's gonna teach in person? And how does that decision get made? And where are we gonna go with the, you know, that? I mean, that's one that is gonna be, that's one that I know is pressing on many districts across the state. And there's this concern about that. I think in Colonial, we have been very fortunate. Our union leadership, our teacher leadership has been involved in these conversations from the get-go. And they know that according to the state guidance document, if we can't answer yes and do the things that they've said we are supposed to do, we can't go in person. We have to make a decision. If we can't meet the criteria that are in front of us, we have to be honest and transparent about where we are. And what's been powerful about Colonial is that we've had teachers at the table for that entire time. So they know the challenges we're facing, they're part of the solution. And when we did the, the survey, when you're talking, almost 40% of your building is coming in. And you look at the grade breakdown and the numbers of students that you're talking about, that makes it a little bit less daunting of meeting the bar of a lot of these criteria. So we're, we're gonna be next week having those conversations. We're having those, we're gonna plan to have those conversations with our union leadership for our CEA as well as our parent educators. Same thing applies with our transportation and our bus drivers. When the people, parents who are picking to put their students on the bus, those that are not, what is that bus gonna look like? What are we gonna do to assure that that bus driver is safe? How are we gonna get meals to those students? Like all those things? If we can get to that point and build the model and not add teaching and parent educator staff, which are the units we put out the door, that would be awesome. But I can't predict that we're gonna either need more or not at this point. It's, we're gonna need probably more support, more on the back of the house side. If you look at the, the significant requirements for cleaning, some of the requirements, it might come into the medical side. If you have a nurse's suite where you have one nurse, but you're supposed to have two rooms. One is where a student goes if they're displaying a symptom, someone's gotta monitor that room, but you only have one nurse. Like there's other implications, but from an instructional side, the numbers are gonna have to play out here in the next couple of days. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Uh, two. One, I know what they did for advocacy centers, which they, what they did actually was fund for their, for their maximum, whatever their capacity was, that's what they funded for. I don't know if that's a S.
That's something that, you know, Emily is definitely at the table talking to the CFOs. And there is a representative on, on the CFO group and the superintendent's group at the state level. It's working through a lot of the financial logistics and the staffing logistics. Definitely, you know, keep that, it's, it's always gonna be an ask, it's a need and it's gonna play out. But as we get closer to the actual rubber, we even the road, that's what we're gonna see where the need really is, what the position actually is. I mean, we currently do have posting. We post it for remote learning teachers. So when we have agencies, we're posting for the needs that we have. No, at this point, temporary contracts start, and Betsy can correct me on this, but sometime in August is when temporary contracts begin to be offered. But right now, any position is a, is a regular contract, I believe. Correct, Betsy?
Well, typically it's August 1st when they, when it starts. So that would be coming up soon. You know, we have a couple of things because of the timing, you know, we know things are a little hectic. But there honestly hasn't been a lot of movement right now in the district. You know, people are staying fit and firm and, you know, we're feeling really good.
I've heard you in the calendar, I stay corrected. And, and August, they will be temporary.
It's, it's so, it's so fluid. And I guess, I have just a subtle question and I don't expect an answer tonight, but you said earlier that whoever's teaching in person couldn't do the virtual teaching at the same time. Why couldn't any student zoom in to that classroom?
So the technology challenges, if we had this in every classroom and that TV was a smart TV, I think you would have people jumping up and say, that would be pretty cool. I'd love to try that.
Okay, so you're, you're, you're trying to work that.
Yeah, like, I mean, there, if we had the ability to have a smart TV and a Zoom camera in every classroom, you're changing the dynamic of the interaction with students in the classroom. We don't have that technology right now. But look, that has been brought up and talked about.
Okay, good.
I think I understood you mean that for everyone.
No, Robin, you're a cynic. Come on. The principal wants to be in the classroom around and keep. Um, so I do, before I close out this, this piece, I do wanna say how appreciative I am and how appreciative the district leadership and those in the district are of this school board and their trust in the district and our ability to make the right decisions for the students. It's, it's unheard of in the world of public education to have a school board that really treats their leadership as well as their teachers the way you do and trusting them to make the best decision for their, their students and their families. I just have to tell you, that does not, it's not the norm. I appreciate it from the bottom of my heart and I know the leadership team at my level does. And I can tell you right now, the staff at the building teams, they can see that you care about them and the decisions that they're making by the authority that you're granting me and the district leadership to make decisions. So thank you very much for that. I, I can't say that enough.
And that, for the rest of the board, that has not gone unseen by some legislators in our, they notice that as well. They hold us as a model for that. Okay.
All right. The next order of business we have is, I have the discussion in action on the delegation of authority to superintendent. Again, I would ask the board to grant me the authority to change the school calendar as I see fit due to the COVID pandemic crisis, when the, you know, when the decisions need to be made. Always coming back to you for a final ratification upon that decision.
Do I hear a motion?
I'm gonna grant superintendent authority to modify start of school for the 2020, 21 school year as he says that due to the current COVID situation.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved second to grant the superintendent authority to modify the start of school for 2021 school year. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
And I'll have an update for you at the next board meeting about what the impact that has for your.
Okay. Next order of business. Miss Falcon, you're up. Oh, excuse me. Stay tuned.
Okay, we have one more.
Yes, we do. We have, and I just passed my note there on that. It is, I have Tennessee adding student member to the Board of Education. Dr. Mentor.
Mr. Laws, as you know, following the last board meeting, you reached out to me and said, hey, Dr. Mentor, why don't we have a student on the Board of Education? I said, I don't know, Dr. Mr. Laws. That's a great question. Let me find out. Comes to find out that the board can have a student be a participant in these board proceedings as a non-voting member. So I'm asking the school board today to give me the approval to reach out to William Penn High School to come for, come forward to you with a proposal to how we would select a school for, a student to join the school board meetings and to be a part of these discussions.
Do I hear a motion? I motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved second to give the superintendent the authority to work with the William Penn High School administration to develop a program to be able to add a student representative to the Board of Education as a non-voting member. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion is carried. Now, Miss Falcon, you are up. Business.
Hey. Good evening again, school board members and Colonial community. I am going to share my screen. The first item I'm gonna put in front of you today is the budget variance report. I'm sorry. Hold on one second. And of course I would run into challenges with sharing my screen because that's, that's what happens. All right. I'm being asked to change my preferences, Phil. I don't know if there's anything you can do to hop in with my variance report.
Is that you, Emily, or Phil?
That's Phil. Phil to the rest.
Yeah, it's Siri, only it's Phil.
Speak it into existence to Phil. Thank you. So, so the first thing we're gonna do is look at the variance report for, for the month ending May. If you could flip to the next page for me, Phil. Okay, so we did review this with our finance committee on July 21st last week. We've seen 92% of the fiscal year go by. We've got just under 100% of our expected annual revenues. And as you can see, the, the numbers here, we are trending below budget. So we're at 86.61%. When you add in encumbrances, we're just under 89% for the end of May. So we are trending under budget, which is, which is expected given, you know, the expectations we put into place when, when the pandemic hit. If you can go to the next page. So we looked at our credit card transactions. They've been pretty minimal and limited to, you know, items that in some cases demand necessitated that we use the credit card rather than putting a purchase order through. And that totaled $5,600. Again, they did offer their recommendation of approval at the, the meeting virtually last week. And I just wanted to note also that Mr. PQ, who has been on the CFOC for the last several years, as obviously was evidenced by his induction to the board earlier tonight, is, is joining the board. I wanna wish him well in his new role and I look forward to working with him there. And I would take any questions.
Any questions for Miss Falcon on the budget variance report? You're lucky we have none this month.
You're just leaving.
Do I hear a motion to approve the monthly variance report?
Make a motion to approve the budget variance report.
It's been moved by Ms. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. McKee to approve the monthly variance budget report. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? Various reports approved. Preliminary budget.
I'm, I'm again gonna ask Phil to help me out.
What would we do without Phil?
We don't wanna find out. So we're looking at the preliminary budget for fiscal year 21. Obviously, this is the financial plan for the 2021 school year. I will be bringing a final budget forward to you after the unit count. I don't know if it was stated explicitly, but the, per the budget bill this year, the unit count process has been actually moved from September 30th to November 13th. So we'll be looking for, you know, that as, as the date. And you know, if, if guidance comes through from the state indicating that the unit count is not gonna be what they're basing our final funding on, and I can present that to you earlier, then certainly I will, I will do that if possible. We also reviewed the budget with our finance committee on July 21st. Going into our state revenues, essentially, the overall picture is that we're down about a percent. There was a couple of things, you know, that we did see cut, the security grant, our minor cap allocation was cut by 11%, which, you know, given some of our deferred maintenance challenges, that's, that was not ideal. But it could have been worse given the economic climate. We saw some minor changes up and down in the opportunity funds and the block grant, student success block grant funding. And you know, that becomes a management challenge because positions are tied to that. And you know, as those amounts go up and down, it can have some impacts on staffing, which can be hard to manage, you know, over, over time. But overall, we've got a slight decrease from last year on the state revenue side. On local revenue, we're actually seeing a little bit of an increase. Our tax base, you know, did have some growth in it. The revenue that we're recognizing, however, is going down because I'm expecting to pull more money into reserves because we've, we've made some budgetary cuts to prepare for the downturn that is expected next year on the state side. Also, just to note, normally I budget 99% of expected tax collections. This year, I did decide to take that down to 98% to be a little bit more conservative and account for any softening that we might see from tax collections, given that unemployment is high and, you know, the economy has. and account for any softening that we might see from tax collections, given that unemployment is high and, you know, the economy has, has taken such a hit. And there were some other, other changes made that did impact the local revenue picture. Moving on to federal revenues. Mr. Laws, given your question earlier, you do see in the, the federal revenues that we did receive the 2.7 million for CARES Act dollars. Our actual allocation was 3.4, but there is some discussion at the, at the federal level around how much, how much we need to hold for private school participation. That's an ongoing fight at the federal level and we may be able to get more than the 2.7, depending on how that circumstance gets resolved. But for now, I went with the, the conservative amount and what I know we have available to us to budget at the 2.7. If we look at our other federal grants, the ones that we get year over year, despite some, some up and down in individual grants, we are pretty much holding steady with, with those numbers there. I do want to point out, just as a summary on the revenue side, when you look at all of the different discretionary revenue sources, we're only increasing our revenues by about $384,000, which, you know, when we're experiencing budget growth or, you know, staff costs are going up and we are expecting to put some additional dollars out for the pandemic relief, et cetera. We just want to be very mindful that we're continuing with our fiscal responsibility. So moving over to expenditures. Essentially, I've started almost every budget at 90% of last year's amount. Again, trying to be conservative and recognizing that more, the more we do now to tighten our belts and, and really set a tone for what is expected in the out years, the better we'll be able to weather that. We're, we're trying to preserve cash as much as we can. So even restricted budgets, as you see, you know, if we were expecting an increase, I certainly recognize that increase. But if there was any way that a restricted budget could be cut or adjusted downward, I, I did do that. And just as a note, you know, normally, the difference between the final, the preliminary and the final is pretty minor and it's, you know, tweaking a number here and there. But this year, given, given, you know, the, the strange nature of, of the times that we're in, I think it is likely that the changes may be a little bit more dramatic when we are looking at the final budget. So whether that, you know, means a change for the positive or change for the negative and further belt tightening, you know, it's, it's difficult to predict at this point, but I am anticipating that, you know, the final budget may look a little bit more different than, than this budget normally does. Just some more specific changes to note. As, as I started to do this past spring, the contingency line that is normally in our general district budget, we started to put our, our COVID-related or pandemic response spending to that budget because certainly it is an unforeseen contingency that, you know, that wasn't accounted for. Rather than setting up another budget, I decided to basically put a half a million dollar placeholder in, in that budget line to account for any expenses that go above and beyond our CARES Act funding. As, as much as, you know, we're going to try to be as fiscally responsible in how we respond to this, you know, I, I want to be prepared for the fact that we may not be able to limit our spending to that 2.7 million. So I've, I've put that out there as, as a placeholder and certainly as, you know, things evolve, we'll see if that needs to be changed dramatically for the final budget. The opportunity funds budgets, instead of just having one lump sum, I've, I've split that out. We had, we had a little bit of administrative trouble kind of keeping all the expenses in that gigantic bucket aligned and, and kept track of. So splitting that out is more of an administrative move for us than, than anything else. And then the 10%, just as a note, you know, our salary budgets, we're not expecting any dramatic changes in our staffing levels. So that 10% cut on our staffing budgets and salary budgets didn't make sense. So I did not carry those through there. Other, but other items that are included in the budget for your review are the expected property tax receipts and then the state, state budget reduction plan, the, the 1.9 roughly a million dollars that we're still giving back to the state from the cut that they implemented in 2018. I will review that plan with the administration and put that forward to you in the coming months. So in summary, basically, you know, this entire budget, we're trying to hang on to as much cash as we can right now in preparation for a, a long-term economic downturn and revenue downturn. This will position us well to, you know, whether, whatever it is that we are going to be faced within the coming months and years. And, you know, we, as Dr. Menzger has said, you know, we really want to be as responsive as we can to the community and our staff and students and keeping everybody health and safe, healthy and safe. And we think that this budget is, is what's going to best position us to do that going into this year. Are there any questions?
Questions for Miss Falcon?
What is the total budget this year versus last year?
That I have right here. It's actually a decrease of 1.2 million or 1.2%, I'm sorry, from, from the FY20 budget.
Do you have a total for this year?
The total for this year is 179.3 million.
For the total operating budget?
Correct.
I thought they put all the money back to the school districts back into the bond bill when they, when they passed the budget. Am I wrong on that?
Which funds specifically are you referring to?
All the, all the cuts that they had originally proposed to the budget, the schools, I thought they refi, refi, put those back into the budget.
Yeah, there, there weren't too many, other than the state security grant being cut and the minor cap allocation being, being decreased by, you know, about 10%. All the other changes to the state revenues really were reflective of demographic shifts or other, you know, eligibility shifts with the, with the opportunity funds. There weren't any major cuts to state revenue this year.
Any other questions?
You think the decrease is probably because we are trying to hold on and the reserve amount we're expecting to see this year is higher than it was in FY20. So we are essentially not, not putting out as much of the revenues we're expecting to get this year over last year. So that's, that's really what's leading to the decline or the decrease over last year.
Okay. Do you have any other questions from the staff? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion to approve the fiscal year 21 preliminary budget? Do I hear a second? It's been moved by Mr. McGee, seconded by Mr. Crosses to approve the fiscal year 21 preliminary budget. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Deferred maintenance expenditure plan.
So the third item I have for you, Phil, I'm not sure that you can, I'm not sure that this is.
We can talk through it. We, we can talk through it. So you recall, I feel like this time last year or thereabouts, we started talking about the BSA money that the state made available for districts to do minor cap projects from the real estate tax. Or it was originally designed for when you were growing and you're going to be building schools. As you know, we're in a pretty landlocked, non-growth area. So somewhere in the last year's bond bill, there was language that said that districts that had BSA money could use it for minor cap projects. But we had to get board approval to submit DOE, I'm sorry, to, to sit down and get the state to their OMB, DOE and comptroller and various folks have to sign off on what we send down to them. All of it. Okay, so I got them all right. So before we can submit down to that, we have to get the board's approval to send down this list. And it is generally, it's a, it's a preliminary list. The last list we sent down, we were the first district or maybe the only district to do it last year. We submitted three projects. How many months to get a, a green light on those? Six?
About, yes, five or six.
And so from those projects, one of them, actually, we ended up doing an addendum and shifting. It's fluid, but we wanted to get in front of the board, the list that we have of projects that we would like to submit down to DOE for the BSA funds that we continue to have. And you saw that the, the memo would be as presented in the, on the board notes.
What's the total amount that we have available to us?
We had 10 million-ish.
Yep.
And we spent 10 million and your projected thing that you have here, including the ones that have already approved, is 5.8.
Correct.
Correct. So we just asked the board's approval to send these down to get them, see if we can get them through the, the ringer down there and at least have the money on hand when we're able to start acting on some of these projects.
Do I hear a motion to approve the deferred maintenance expenditure plan? Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McGee, seconded by Mr. Handy to approve the deferred maintenance plan. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? Motion is carried. Items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Public comment?
We have two. Say your name, Mr. Smallwood will bring them forward for you.
Wendy Saget.
Good evening.
Wendy, how are you doing today?
I'm good. How are you?
Just want to thank you. I just want to remind you that you have a time limit of three minutes. We will give you a heads up at two minutes and 30 seconds if it goes that long.
Okay. After reading the DOE guidelines for reopening of schools, I have several concerns regarding in-person learning as it applies to the provision of speech-language services. Firstly, the DOE plan indicated that ventilation should be increased. However, many of our district SLPs are working in spaces that have no HVAC ventilation or windows. Also, DOE indicated that students that are participating in in-person learning will be kept in stable groups to minimize exposure across the building. I'm thinking that this is going to be difficult for in-person learning as district speech-language pathologists often work across grade levels and in multiple buildings. We're also charged with providing combination of both push-in and pull-out therapy services. Even in the same building, students are often participating in pull-out therapy services from different classrooms. So I'm concerned that not only will I be exposed to more students than the average teacher, but if I were to get COVID-19, I could, you know, not just myself, but any speech-language pathologist could become a super-spreader because we have greater exposure. And then lastly, the articulation services that we provide often require the student and the SLP to be able to see each other's mouths. This lets, lets them achieve their correct placement of their tongue, their teeth and their lips. So I guess I'm just wondering how the district reopening plan is going to address these concerns.
Wendy, first of all, thank you for submitting your concerns. We definitely see what your, your questions are here and what your concerns are. As you heard earlier, Dr. Menzger mentioned that there are working groups that are, that are meeting this Thursday to go over some of the plans on the path forward. And I will ask him to take these three items to those working groups and assign them to the appropriate group to try to get your answers on how we plan on attacking or addressing those specific questions. So.
I appreciate that. I also just wanted to say in listening to your discussion earlier, Dr. Menzger said that teachers will either be teaching completely in person or completely remotely. Do you anticipate that this will be true for speech-language pathologists as well?
Again, I, I can't answer that. I don't think Dr. Menzger's in a position to answer that right now either until we have further discussions on path forward on how they plan to, to address each of those items. Again, your points are well taken and will be considered as part of their, part of the plan on what they're going to do. Okay, I'm sure that Dr. Menzger, we may have someone reach out to you and ask you for any more input that you may have or other questions that you may have. So I think Dr. Menzger has all your contact information. So he will have somebody reach out. Got it? Okay? All right, next public comment we have is Wendy Gurness, an expert, excuse me if I mispronounced your name, your last name. Wendy, available?
Yes, I'm here.
There you go. All right. Okay, Wendy, thanks for joining us. We appreciate your input. Again, I will remind you that you have a three-minute time limit. At two minutes and 30 seconds, you will be given notification that you're about out of time.
Okay, I'll speak fast. My name is Wendy Gurness. I'm a national board certified teacher who teaches at Castle Hills Elementary. I'm hoping to enter my 26-year of teaching. I'm concerned about the opening of school during this unusual in trying time. Many teachers in our district are concerned with their health and welfare about returning to the classroom as well as the health and welfare of our families, students and their families. We would love to get back to normal, but what is normal? COVID-19 is unknown and how it affects children and the lasting effects the virus has on them as well as the adults who contract it. We pulled students out of school when Delaware had approximately 26 cases. There are a lot more cases now and some states have even put us on their quarantine list. Students have been pretty much sequestered since March. We really don't know what the data will look like once we return to face-to-face in the classroom. Some concerns are, has the district thought about ventilation system and airflow in older buildings? Who will be doing the cleaning and sanitizing of the classroom and bathroom? I know I can't find my own personal cleaning supplies. How will we make sure that stakeholders don't come to school if sick or exposed? We've just seen what happened in baseball where they have strict protocols and testing, but what about us? If a teacher or child dies, how will that trauma be handled? What happens if we get a sub and then they test positive? There have been warnings from doctors about the safest place to eat when dining out is outdoor seating. How safe is it to be with students eating lunch in the classroom, especially with masks off and they're talking across the room to their friends? Although the governor said that students from K through three aren't required to wear masks, doesn't this put teachers into jeopardy? Children can be asymptomatic but won't run a fever but still spread the virus. Will we get PPE and how often will it be replaced? At the elementary level, many of our students have babies or grandparents at home. Our staff have grandparents who watch their children. How can we make sure everyone is safe? We keep hearing about the second wave and that it would be worse than the first. Why open schools only to close them again? How will that affect the students? When we went remote in the spring, teachers had to scramble. We were basically flying by the seat of our pants. Students didn't know some of the programs we were asking them to learn, so there was a steep learning curve. If we start school remotely in mid-September, it gives teachers a chance to prepare remote lessons, take PD and make remote learning a truly educational experience. I'm an older teacher. Teachers like. Okay, teachers like me in their 60s and teachers with underlying conditions are scared about returning under these conditions. Please have us go remote until January and then we evaluate. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Wendy, thank you very much for your, your input and your questions. We appreciate your concerns. I think you've already had some previous conversations with Dr. Menzger. Again, as I, as I mentioned earlier, for other public member or a teacher, there are ongoing meetings. And a number of those items that are being discussed in those meetings is have to address some of these items specifically that you've raised here around cleaning, ventilation and everything else. So again, it's, we understand it's a moving target of what we're trying to get accomplished here. But as you well know, you will be informed of what our decisions are. And are you, I don't know if you can still answer me or not, are you on one of those working groups? You probably can't answer me, but if you have an interest on maybe getting on one of those working groups, maybe you should reach out to Dr. Menzger or whoever he assigns to.
Yeah, I had, I had signed up. I was on the, one of the groups that, like the survey group, but that was about it.
Okay, all right. Well, Dr. Menzger will have someone reach out to you and we'll go from there.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your questions. All right, that's the list we have. The next order of business. The next order of business would be a German, but I'd just like to make a quick comment if we could. And of course, send the same courtesy to other members of the board. Dr. Menzer, and I would like for you to pass on to your staff, inclusive from the top all the way to the bottom, the appreciation from myself, and I, hopefully I'm speaking for the board on the efforts they put together to date, you know, trying to get our kids back to school. We all know, we're hearing all different reports and whatnot that of how important it is to get the kids back into school, not only from educational standpoint, but also socializing, available for mental illnesses and all those kind of things. It's, it's very important to do that. I also want to thank the, the board for working through what we've had to do here since March in regards to our remote meetings that we've had. I know it hasn't been easy to do some of it with all the technical challenges some of this has, speaking for myself. Lucy, though. Just to be clear, it could be challenging from time to time, and as Ms. Falcon said, thank Phil. But I just want to express my thanks to everybody for working through that. And hopefully, we'll see the end of this thing here soon. Again, it's a moving target. One day, we're on the Pennsylvania jerseys hitting us, and the next day, we're not. We'll, we'll see how that goes. We're all decent right now, so they're just trying to keep that.
Seriously?
But again, I appreciate everybody's support on that. A lot of them are listening right here, right from the district leadership group and staff, so they'll, they'll hear your words and take it back, so we do appreciate that. And I ask the board to be appreciative of what people are doing. As Jeff said earlier, we're one of the only boards that I'm aware of that trusts our administration and our people to do what they, they're the pros at. I don't know why other organizations don't do it the same way, but we can't speak for them. All right? Any other comments from the board?
That was still my thunder.
Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Do you want to adjourn?
Turn, Michael.
It's not off yet, so don't, don't say anything.